Here.
Holly.
Uh, out.
Uh, Janelle.
Uh.
Johnston.
Here.
Uh, Karat.
Here.
I'm here. Uh, Malinaro.
Here.
And Professor.
Present.
Ronus.
Here.
We're all here in the board except for Mr. Holly who's leading Florida. Um, on holiday. Hi, everybody. I personally would like to say hello and ask the rest of the board, the people that are watching us, since we're being televised, one of them will be our Deb Warner, the other one will be Ambrose Hudson-Platt, who informed me last week that she will just have to every new person. So, hi guys. All right. All of you can say hi. Hi. I'm going to want to give you a story. Okay, then. We're going to start with the recognition.
Yes.
Do the gentleman.
Gaccio?
Just.
Why do you have to do some recognition?
Yes, and I was going to ask Mr. Gaccio to come and introduce his student.
They're going to play. You just.
Thank you, Gary.
Good evening, everyone. Very, very honored this evening to introduce to you Raul Malapan. Can't hear me.
See, I didn't have to say it.
It's quite under recorded. Very proud to introduce to you this evening, Raul Malapan. Raul is a 12th grader at Danbury High School. He is ranked number one in his class. And of course, at Danbury High School, that means being ranked number one out of about 600. Um, he has a GPA cumulative of 4.670 to GPA of 5.2024. He has taken 13 AP classes. He has taken AP semester, AP Biology, AP English Language, AP Government Politics, AP Statistics, AP Physics. And in one of those grades, he got a 95, so we'll have to talk about that rather than. That team. He is the leading programmer for the robotics team and just recently scored a perfect score of 400.
Will he hold it back a year? No, two or three.
We just learned in the last couple of weeks that Raul is a National Merit Scholarship finalist. And that's just an incredible accomplishment.
What a shot.
Some 15,000 students are selected nationwide as semifinalists, but few of those make it to the category of finalists. So, we're extremely proud of Raul. Although I wish I could take all the credit at Danbury High School, I want you to know that he is a product of the Danbury Public School system. He attended Stabby Rough for his elementary and then Broadview for his middle school. Who are here supporting him this evening. Raul. Certificate of Merit Scholarship Program that reads, "This certificate of merit is awarded in the National Merit Scholarship Program of 2016 by demonstrating through distinguished performance, high potential for future academic accomplishment," and is signed by the president of the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, Timothy McGuire.
Raul, if you would come up and receive your certificate.
Come in the middle there.
You can come down.
Center.
The Danbury Board of Education is sending you a certificate of achievement. You have been selected as candidate for the United States Presidential Scholarship Program. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
So, has he picked his followers?
You're getting used to shaking. Mom and dad and sister want to stand up?
Yes.
Raul, welcome to the university. He chose to come.
Not yet.
Yeah.
I have to get in first.
We're going to be applauding with that, let me know.
I've applied to MIT, Cornell, Princeton, Stanford, Caltech, um, other places. Carnegie out.
I'm sure one of them.
Very many offices.
Congratulations.
But I do need to say one thing. In 14 years that I've sat on the Board of Education, I've seen five grandparents cases. I've seen five teachers and everything. I have never seen Gary Gaccio so proud. On a seat here. And I've known him all 14 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, okay. And that is followed by. The Board, Board of Education's public participation asks the speakers, please, to leave comments for three minutes. Speakers may offer. I'm sorry. Speakers may offer objective comments of school operations and programs that concern them. Board will not permit any expression of personal complaints or definitive comments about Board of Education personnel and students or against any person connected with the Danbury Public School System. I'm calling anyone out because there is no. Oh. Is it okay, my seat? Oh, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sherry Styrenovsky, and I am actually a resident of Brookfield, but my triplet girls attend the AIS magnet school. So, I have three girls in third grade, one in each class. I think I will be the only parent when my children graduate fifth grade, I will have had every single teacher that teaches in that school. I will have, I have experienced every single teacher. So, um, I'm here to give an unique um, a, a unique experience about sibling preference, only because I'm have three children of the same age that W. Menoos had been accepted to AIS. Making a very difficult decision. And I think if it was, if today I were in kindergarten, I might have made a different decision. But at the time, Brookfield Public Schools had half-day kindergarten, were phasing in full day, it was going to take a few months, and they had no foreign language program. So, it was a wonderful opportunity. And I was faced with, there was no possible way I could send two of my children to one school and one to another. How do you explain to your third child that they can't go to this school where they have gardening and they read to dogs and they have international studies, and your other two sisters can? You know? And so, I was, I was stuck. I mean, I, I remember making my husband take the day off so that I could take two to AIS and he could take one to, to, to Brookfield, and he could have lunch with that one after half-day and have a special day with daddy and so on and so on. Um, but I guess what I'm saying in a nutshell is that, uh, I know when you speak of sibling preference, because for most people, sibling preference is children of two different ages. But sibling preference would also affect children of the same ages. And the only reason that my, my third daughter was able to get in, and it was the day before school started, was because she did go to the top of the list because her other two siblings were in the kindergarten class. Um, otherwise, I think the chances of my third triplet getting in were probably zero. And how does a parent make a decision like that? Do you deprive two children of getting maybe a more fulfilling education because they're not going to, because they're going to school more hours? I'm not even talking about programs. I mean, a kid goes to school, a kid goes to school, they all. Um, you know, a kid. At one school, they go to, Brookfield's got wonderful schools, Danbury's got wonderful schools, but there's a difference between full day and half-day kindergarten. And how do you make a choice as a parent of either depriving two of your children to attend the magnet school and go to full-day kindergarten with a foreign language program? Or deprive one, or explain to another child, and that would be a very difficult thing to do. Um, so, there, there, there are things about sibling preference that I think are not always taken into consideration. Um, because I have multiples, I meet lots of parents with multiples. I've met a mom from Brookfield where one twin got in and the other didn't, and she chose to send them both to the neighborhood school. Um, I've met parents that have split their twins. I haven't met anybody else with triples. But, so, um, I'm just asking for, for consideration that on sibling preference, because it's not younger and older siblings, it's also, it's also multiples, um, that would be affected by this no sibling preference. I, I sat with Mr. Dr. Natsowski today for a little time and we're over numbers. Am I over three minutes? Okay.
No, no. We want you to know we're. We don't comment. Thank you. All righty, um, is there anyone else, um, in there? Except the people sitting at this table? All righty, moving along. The second chairman.
Sixteen page 23, 22 through 50.
Everybody, yeah? Professor.
Manager.
Yes, miss?
On the finance committee meeting, um, it was noted that was an error.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much.
Nice catching. Did you get that joke? Okay.
Otherwise.
Otherwise, have at it?
Have it.
Okay, the, uh, thing, um, based on that also, I would like to thank Mayor Silvestre for the 37 years of service with Danbury Board of Education. All righty. Moving, oh, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections, objections? Got it? Now, moving along. We have, um, we have three representatives in the audience. I see. Three of them. Four. I see four. Move on up.
My name is Josh Ray. My colleagues and I are representing Pembroke Elementary School. I think we all very appreciate the school. We think it's unique among the elementary schools and has served such a large portion of the. And that's, that's been, I think, in my seven years. The special ed population again, the regular educational population. Feel that. So, just wanted to, um, we appreciate the work the board does. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies, do you know what he is saying?
Guys, that's all the talking.
She returns a kindergarten teacher. I teach fifth grade. Chris O'Leary teaches first grade special ed. And Ms. Brown is a wonderful teaching teacher in the district.
Oh, excellent.
For the, for the, for the board, Pembroke is really an integrated school for us. We have our district magnets, special education programs, and the staff is really incredible. The rigor, number one, is phenomenal in the district. Your success, mainstream students and integrated students. Comments about that, so we want to say thank you. Thank you for your work and dedication that you all do.
Oh.
But next, I think your time is the student representative. You'll introduce yourselves, the number student representative, who is person.
Hi, my name is Avery Michael. In the last two report cards, I, on February 2nd, we had on the state. Uh, last week, 24 students and three teachers attended a deployment trip to Orlando, Florida. We went to a sports and entertainment marketing conference in Orlando and spent two days. We spent two days in reversal and one day in Disney. We heard speakers from various companies and teams in the Orlando area. And then for upcoming events on Saturday, February 14th, at 7:00, we have a safety Hawkins dance for, um, what's it called? Valentine Day. On Monday, February 22nd, we're having the freshman orientation for all the incoming freshmen. And on Tuesday, February 23rd, there's the all-see concert at Danbury High.
Hi, my name is Hans Wong. I'm the vice president of the board members for Danbury High School. Um, another upcoming event we have is this Friday, uh, the peer leadership class from Danbury High School is going to, um, disperse around Danbury to start the initiative of Start with Hello for, um, all the elementary schools.
Tell the board how many elementary schools we're going to.
Uh, we're going to 13 elementary schools.
All of them?
Well, no, 13 now. Say we're greater than. Okay, anyways, um, award. Year, um, which is Leo Club is French of the Lions Club. We work for Lexi here, Lexi Conigas. GE Ronald Reagan. Oh, sure. Uh, okay, okay. Um, sure. So, um, the GE Ronald Reagan Scholarship is given to 20 students each year. I am currently a semi-finalist. Um, I don't know, I'm not sure quite how the process will end up going from here, but there were 25,000 applicants. They select under 20 semi-finalists, and then they select 20 finalists to then give these scholarships to. Um, so, hopefully the best, but we'll see. Um, another award was also, you saw Raul Malapan here. Um, he was nominated as a U.S. Presidential Scholar. Chip Salstrini, Athletic Director of Danbury High School, was also nominated for Athletic Director of the Year. And, um, Anna Schloss, artistic art and writing organization here. Um, but our past few meetings, I'm currently part of a committee that is working to tackle, um, funding of extracurricular experience in a lot of ways. But our committee is planning on doing, uh, so each school does release a report on their spendings each year. Um, but, so we can technically take a look at that to find some of the data that we're looking for. Um, but we also to release our, we will be randomly selecting 10 schools in the state that fall under the, I suppose you could say, socioeconomic parameters of, of the study that we're trying to conduct. Um, what school would believe might prohibit from expanding its array of on this, that way schools don't feel as if they what it does and we get some feedback, um, we will
The board is to what you're doing, giving us the effort, not only in that position so that it continues. And it just doesn't. Board of Ed is kind of a bit of a word.
Yep. That's right. Thank you.
There you go. Action, please do your own thing. Moving on, starting with the action made of A.
All right. That the Board of Education adopt a superintendent's fiscal year 2016-2017 budget, the amount of $129,467,777, a 4.59% increase for submission to the air and
Well, that's what it flattens. Whatever. It works with it all these years. Okay. It's been, are there any questions or discussion? Wow. Oh, okay. Michael.
If someone could say something. And I usually always don't. You know, last year, we were kind of confronted with this. This year, um, we were confronted with this. Um, and reluctantly, at the time, voted wishful thinking, um, and it's a shame that that has to be the situation, of the situation that we're in. All I would say is that we know that we asking, um, for our budget. No, we can't afford.
Saying, and then anyone else to ask? You're up, submitting it. Nine. Give us this one.
Submit this right, uh, signed by a leader?
Yes, I have a, a letter. This is a beginning to move this way. We have about 79 students at the typical form today. There's about $11,000 in the budget for rental of the sacred facility we did, get some space. That allows to reduce that out of the budget, for example. So, it's going to begin to generate some revenue from that program. And frankly, the way it's, it's, it's for what, for what they're getting today for the program is, is pretty amazing.
Joe, I just, I thought when we, when we had a conversation last night, we also, I think I told the board, we would consider sliding scale.
Correct. After saw the circle, Mike, not this.
Yeah.
We all have our time during.
Testing.
Yours isn't working.
Push lock. Push lock.
No, it's down. Joe gave me the wrong one. Well, at the meeting, it was the previous sliding scale.
Right.
For those families, and we didn't put that, actually included the motion.
That's all.
Just so we're all straight.
And, and so, everybody knows, correct me if I speak again, you have a scholarship program hospital, don't you?
That's Debbie's.
Debbie's question. We have a scholarship program?
I know.
Not for typicals.
Not for this?
Well, we are looking at sliding scale back to 500 to 300. So, essentially, go back to the, on the low side based on the career and use form status, though still to think of the benchmark is that.
So, if we get banned to the motion.
All right. What are we adding to the function? Somebody say it's out.
Sliding scale.
Sliding scale.
Yes, from five, one, three hundred.
Jody, did you get that?
There'll be an amendment.
Needs to be recycled. Needs to be said.
I'm sure she does it, needs to say it's recycled.
No, it's like the, the
So, there's a friendly amendment to the, uh, motion, which reads, could someone just read it, sort of straight? Can you read it, Jody? Jody?
The Board of Education approved the increase for the special education preschool program on a sliding scale of $3 to $500.
So, that's, that's.
Okay, is it, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnston? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Opinions? Go. Done. Moving on, all right, to the superintendent's report. Start.
Did Karen go to the end?
Yes, yes. He had to study.
You don't let him get away?
Okay, you're right.
Okay, let me, I don't have this down, but I don't have this down, but let me start. Some good news. Alexis, remember? Remember, we were concerned about that ROTC program? That we did, we do have a person who's interested, we're going through the application list. Doesn't mean we're going to select a person. We're still going to be down one, because currently we have the, 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 the head of the program who's retired. The, uh, second in command is a substitute, although with a background, but not, did not come through the ranks where they considered a full-time member of the staff. So, we probably, if we do successful in getting the, the, uh, the head, uh, ROTC person, it'll still be on probation, although I have a program. So, we get a chance to keep it a degree. Uh, so, I was going to ask Karen about the project he was going to conduct to him this week, so it's not here. A desperate. Foreign trips, remember we, we had, it's going to start coming up. Right now, by board policy, it's in your prerogatives to, you have to approve and not approve trips. So, when we, you know, we went through the workshops and decided that we have those trips this year move forward, even though the parents had signed the acknowledgement that, that you may cancel a trip. But when it came down to it, you know, it's really kind of a slice of it, right? So, we looked into, um, you know, legal obligations, we checked around the districts. Was the gentleman from one of the travel agencies said that he was working with a school that, um, you know, a school district didn't sponsor, they simply provided a service. I could find no school that did that. As recent as this morning, I sent something out about, Garrett reached out to the principal association, um, and we didn't find anyone that said, maybe board policy that says no. And then, because I won't know what procedures are put in there, um, because there are some legal issues, standard of care, where they had access to that information and how they would handle it, but no one's done that. So, we do have some, we did send something to our attorney, we got some information. Maybe you want to share it, Kim?
Um, we did, we did actually two things. Um, we continued the dialogue with, um, our outside counsel about levels of responsibility based on your assumption of risk of a trip going. Um, so that's very much in keeping with the discussions we already had, um, that if the school district has sponsored school trips, um, in a particular manner and something were to happen, um, on one of those trips, then there is a, a general negligence issue about your behavior and approval or willingness to approve a trip and, um, in light of the risks that may create exposure. The thing that I think the next step, um, for you all to consider, and it's coming up at a point now where you're going to be asked to entertain trips for the following school year, this is typically the time when, um, teachers start to come to propose trips. Um, and one of the things that we would urge you to do is to think about whether or not going forward, you want the district to be sponsoring these trips or what's the students' go on of their own accord. And so, that would involve looking at what the nexus is between the district and the trip itself. Trips were further separating the sponsorship of these trips, um, in order to hedge against any liability should you have yourself in a situation or something would occur. I think it's a hot topic, to be honest. There are many, many districts that have canceled, all looking at the same kind of inquiries. Going forward, um, you know, if it was paid in and is ready to go this year, or they've canceled this year, going forward, do you want to be a district that continues to sponsor these trips or whether you want to try to, um, have a lesser nexus that might hedge against any, um, liability you might have in case of accident?
If you have a
I'm just in conversation with, you know, administrative team at the high school, the position. I said, what if the board said, no farm trips, no work, no trips? And we started talking about the implementation of that. It really was fraught with a lot of questions. And, you know, and always, if the genesis of the information can be traced back to the deepest pockets, which right here, it will happen. So, whether that's a flyer, a bake sale, a student to parent that comes and does a presentation, and, you know, they were concerned, the, uh, they being a travel agency applies for and recharge that money for facility and come in, they can do that. That's okay to do. And you could put those regulations, Gary and Dan and the rest were just concerned about some of those other things that could happen, and how could they safeguard those things? And I'm just to an editorial, and I heard you all that night, and I understand what you did and how you did it. One of the things that I pride myself is that we've been able to provide experiences for kids and nurses, not only education, but travel, things that they normally wouldn't do. And if you put that in the hands of private tiers, I don't think there's the tendency given to those youngsters who need to help raise funds and do those things. So, I, I, you know, I think you need to balance that. There is a standard of care, and I don't know how you get away from me and you know that, but you got to be prepared to kill. That's all.
Kim, the, if there, if there's a, a policy which says that you cannot hold the, the functions on school grounds and you cannot do the flyers, et cetera, and they do do it, well, if they're doing it against policy, it doesn't mean that we're, we're, don't mean that, does it?
Not necessarily. I mean, I think if you have Not necessarily. I mean, I think if you have
would then attend or be get back out of it. And the district, is that, is that saying that we agree with that part of it?
Yeah, not necessarily. Again, it's all in these two great. And so what you're trying to do is you're trying to mitigate, you know, the connection. And so, and Dr. Sonic had this conversation that, you know, the the teacher who goes is going as a private city a course room that's being delivered while on the trip and that
Certainly is part of the industry, correct?
Correct. So really, again, just to sort of reemphasize, I think what you're trying to do is you're trying to pick off as many of the factual connections as you can. And you're not going to get all of them, but you're trying to do what you to establish that this is hard with their work funds and uncut up.
The interesting stuff. Field trips. Of which sometimes happens there, what happens?
Is that plausible as a way?
Basically, what you'd be buying is you'd buy position. So I, I
The event that to be in place and add it on to it, therefore but not for a small additional all school districts in the state right now, they're looking at what that would cost additional insurance.
And we can, then if you're looking for a grant, sure. So the kid, they'll start coming sometime in March.
Kim, just as a, as a place clarification, because I think what you're talking about here is
This is CNN.
Your standard of care language that you're bringing up is essentially we're talking about if we're negligent or not. Right? I mean, we're talking about if there is an awareness that something could be dangerous and then we're going against and doing and permitting some acts that we're wanting to 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 remind us all of is that if there's not a threat or not a warning or a watch or whatever level it is, it's it's not as much of a discussion. If it's something that there is a threat and there is something that's a higher level of scrutiny, then we're talking about something where we could be negligent. And again, additional insurance is is good point, but this is what we're conscious decision to take.
To go back and I think about that too, with the I think we have to know that there's a level of, there's a possibility of somebody getting hurt regardless of where anybody goes forever. That's just the nature of being alive. So I would hate to cancel it just because, you know, we feel that somebody could get hurt somewhere. You know, as long as it's just an alert, I think that's something that we should ensure against if we could.
All right, thank you.
So it's just on so it's just on for information. We'll look into the insurance and then we'll bring that back to you and, you know, then we can talk. If you want to change you can just say no. I mean, you know, this year. So it doesn't mean, we just wanted to make sure we looked at all those options. That's all. Thank you.
I think so.
I just wanted to say, I mean, I mean, my if there's a travel warning or any higher limit, that's certainly not. I think it is very important that we we require groups to obtain a level of insurance, whatever we think is is what we need to protect the district. And then we pass the cost along to the students. I mean, it's just, not every student is participating in these trips, so why should the district or other students pay the cost of that? And, you know, they can obtain that insurance named the district as a named insurer or whatever is necessary just to protect them. Also, when I was looking into this a little bit, I saw there was a position paper or something from the State Board of Education back in two thousand nine or two thousand eleven where they were encouraging legislation to be passed and they were encouraging the districts to to have students participate in foreign travel. And obviously, nothing's happened since then. I mean, it's impossible to get any sort of legislation passed, but I think maybe we should look in to do more at the state level, maybe to, you know, protect the districts when it comes to trips like this because it's tough. And you can't put a district in a position where you're saying, hey, we want you to allow your students to go overseas and, you know, participate in foreign travel and then, you know, not protect us in the event that, God forbid, something happens. So I would rather the cost of obtaining insurance be the limiting factor in where students decide to go rather than us determine making insurance providing that than we are. So I think it's all.
Technology grant, Joe?
Amber's tech grant about a year ago and we're hard to get that
Yeah, the entire efforts of the state. Thank you. They really got it on their force. And we're going to have it in the timely fashion. It's terrific for the kids. So I thank them for it. Citywide BTO budget on the tenth. I talked to a citywide BTO last week, Ralph, to help with the budget process. How can they get optimistic? One is given to be educated on it. As Michael said, are we ever going to get it? I have to make the assumption I'm asking for, but I think we need minimally to move along. And apparently, as many of you do, that they would like to see our class sizes remain reasonable for from that Monday night to that night. Again, and it does create an education and background for the parents as they go to the council and speak city council. It's about the state stepping up what they like to do. So it's more of a collaboration, not an anti municipality kind of thing. So she would come first with a presentation. We would present the budget and give them the timeline. And then from there, they can make decisions about some trips to Hartford, which is would be good, some trips into the city council. So they were reaching out. So it's March tenth. Anything else about that night, Ralph? About that?
No, just that we recommended, you know, they asked what to do and we told them to talk to their their council people about the budget and stuff like that. But the budget presentation is something that they really, they really
So I think it's seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Then you'll send something.
We'll send something out. I want to ensure. We had to make sure Katie Roy was available. That was the thing that we were kind of going back for.
But it is firm to, that we have at seven o'clock, is that correct?
Yeah. They check right now.
I think they're looking for, hey, okay, you're going down for the exact time. And that was, I'm not sure if they did that.
I think she committed Thursday or Sunday.
Thursday.
We were shooting for Thursday the tenth.
Thursday the tenth.
Mm-hmm. Okay, last week, two weeks ago, I did testify on the CJF cases spent from, I guess it was ten o'clock to four thirty, I understand from now on, right? And we spent the three quarters of that time, I want to say, with our side, talking about the deficits, the inequalities, things that, you know, that we're talking about for the Lexus in terms of, you know, the fairness and equity issues that we have. We did some really anecdotal stuff with them. I was able to present that to them. That went well. And then came to the side the afternoon. And I will tell you, they spent probably a good hour on half talking about, they probably went back and they got everything that we put out for public information and they put everything into the minutes or whatever they call it, into the record, you know, and it was, how can you tell me you need resources when your, you know, your ELL students succeeding above the state and your ERG and in fact, other ERGs above you? How can you tell me you need resources when your elementary school is a connected associate school in the year? How can you tell me that you need resources from your engineer or when you need more kinds of things? I mean, our rebuttal was measures that had resources, you know, basically, what can you do that? The judge was phenomenal. He was, he would stop and ask for clarification. We talked about the step program, but we don't have that. It is, when a youngster's in a special program and goes into a mainstream, it's nice to give them, you know, a biblical report, basically a step program. We talked about what that would look like. Coaches, all of those things. So we spent a lot of time educating the judge with those things. The case, our case will go on through March and then the state will put on their case. So I don't know what decision should come. I don't know if you guys will know better. You know, I'm hoping that, I'm hoping a few things that the way, you know, Malina's group may come together and talk about what you have some.
You have a state budget on the two cell.
That's a Freudian slip.
You have to come back.
I'm sure. You all saw the state budget was in terms of
Special education access cost grant that we did. They flat funded ECS, which means additional million that was
And you think this by the way, has been, the governor and the state has been doing their due diligence by providing funds to the previous districts. And those funds are exactly the funds, the governor is just you know, that doesn't work in my mind. What is going on? So, you know, they could reinstate that. On that, so we don't know. So I where we're at and we'll submit the budget. We're not making any excess decisions about our literacy people.
Hundred fifty, this is a lot. They're probably looking at two to fifty. Four to percent. Oh, including the board. Not key loses ECS.
First, no. Um, which is, I'm just, Gary.
Oh, yes.
So, yeah. So we are hiring, as you know, several, filling several administrative positions this year. Right now, there are three vacancies. There's the principal at Broadview Middle School. There is the assistant principal at Derry High School. And there is the principal of Shelter Rock Elementary School. So we are going to take the first of those positions a week on Friday, on February the nineteenth. And I know Fred and I think both will be serving on the panels. That will be for the Broadview Middle School principal. Once we've settled that position, then our plan is to move on to Shelter Rock Elementary School and we've got that T F as well. And then the last one through will be the high school. So we're hoping to have every, well, we should have the Broadview, hopefully, Broadview principal candidate for you in two weeks. And then the others will probably by month after that. So that's the plan for the moment. The only other plug I want you to want to have the microphone is central registration opened. And it's been going great. It's been going very, very well. We've had quite a few people now starting to come on the Monday, Wednesday, Friday and putting something up. I mean, I at least got rushers over at the that city hall. They're starting to have a flow around the city. And we've had quite a few parents drop in, which is great. They haven't all come at once. So it's given our new folks in the center a chance to get acclimated and and get ready. But they've done some reorganizing over there and I think they're they're ready to go. So I've been working with the administrators on the elementary schools to make sure that their parents are aware that if there are younger siblings in those families to try to get them out early. Vote by voting, vote early and often. And hopefully, we'll have, we'll continue to be a role here.
Do we have sort of positions that you're looking to fill? Do we have applicants from within a district who are moving?
You want to circle back to the principalship, you mean? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah, we have both internal and external applicants for all of the positions so far.
So I want to circle back because can you briefly tell them what the process is?
Sure. So several years ago, the board implemented a multi-step process, a multi-tiered process for interviewing principals and assistant principals and it's in the policy, whenever those positions become vacant. It provides for handling two different interview panels with that regard to size. So we usually try to keep them about seven or eight panels each. Panel is their curriculum pedagogy mission type folks who ask a lot of questions about vision, theory of leadership, those sorts of things. They tend to also be other principals in the district. And that's the first panel or one of the panels. Running concurrently is a panel of what the board at that time called those likely to be most affected by the hire. It's teachers, it's PTA presidents. It may also include a school governance council representative versus a school that has a school governance council. And so again, we try to make seven or eight folks to sit on those panels. We provide pretty rigorous writing sample process and we typically will give the applicants who are coming, who've been screened and coming to interview, a good look at the questions ahead of time or some topic questions ahead of time. So that they can start to familiarize themselves with what kinds of discussion will occur during the interview. We give about forty-five minutes to each panel. And after all of the candidates have been interviewed, I go back in and debrief both panels one at a time. Talk a little bit about, you know, what they saw. They have a sort of a riddled sheet that tracks generally the questions that are asked. And then we kind of run what they liked, what they didn't like, what they saw in certain candidates that they thought might be useful somewhere else in the district. And that's part of our approach to district, to look with the eyes at everyone in position. But we have had occasions where we've asked them to come and interview for a different spot. So we try to do that. And that's what the debriefing is really meant to do is to get at that. It's been our experience over all of these years that if we bring in five or six or seven people at the top, two or three, and then there's typically a big gap and then we're short of everybody else. And so I'm trying to assess out where the gap is and find those people that are above the gap to bring back to Dr. Saul. And then after that, he goes ahead and makes his decision and then comes back to you all. So that's generally how it works.
I'll do the, it's not a recommendation. I'll do the choice. But I present the pros and cons. And usually, board members that are on that committee would add into the conversation. So you all know it's kind of the three sixty. And that's what we do for all.
So I would encourage if you would like to turn on one of the two other panels to speak with your chair, because we typically, you know, try to get a lovely variety of people to participate. And that way you can help to guide the process.
The only thing is if you volunteer, you got to sit, you got to be there.
If you be there all day, yeah. Typically, they're all there.
Does there, I know that there was discussion about a assistant principal at one side noticeable. Is that supposed to come up at some point or?
That's going to depend on the budget, to be honest. That's going to depend on what kinds of positions we end up having. So we haven't got that on the roster yet.
Okay, that's what I was.
Well, in the budget that you approved, in there is assistant principal for the
Is there a requirement to have because of the size of the school?
No, I've got it. It's just a type of level and the need at that level, we decide it needs to be too.
Okay.
But there is no requirement per se.
Okay.
Bill, right off the bat, would we begin the process for that? Because with the budget, we may not know until May.
Well, remember that now we're going to be interviewing for at least two secondary slots, right? The Broadview Middle School principal and assistant principal at DHS. So my suspicion is we're going to, we're trying to keep those very rich pools so that we will look at candidates with this in mind. So we'll get that all back.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, so now we're going to move on to
Just wanted you to know the time of survey is going to go out. That's the, that's the state law. We have to move a time and survey this new year. So process wise, there's a, I think this Friday night, this Friday, Friday night, we're going to send a roll home saying, tell the parents
that we're going to do the survey. And then start the, this is parent survey, we do by phone. Say yes, no, it's very short, I'll have a question. And then we'll go out to the faculty and then we'll go out to the students that you do as well. We'll have it posted online in case a parent wants to look at it. Uh, you know, some parents may say, you know, I don't want my child to listen, but, yeah. But it asks questions about the climate, asks questions about the teachers, their reception, their expectations. So that generally going out.
No, we, I refracted the last one. A pretty large university.
Yes, I'll send it home. We just finished it today. We had to have them translate in Portuguese, this is our issue.
We didn't need to, you know, the last question, we just before we gave it out.
We can, yeah, we'll send it home.
All right, it's my report. Okay. For a hundred years, we had, we had to attend three expulsion hearings before you could sit on, on the panel. Due to the diligence of our members, we actually changed it to warrant people to sit on the panel. It's hard for people to find people to sit on, you know, just go in and sit and not participate. So we changed it to two. We needed two. And then we changed it last year. We never officially changed it. Mr. Karat told us, um, for Bible, I'll say three. So it was our job here tonight to change it to two. You know, two expulsion hearings prior to being on an expulsion hearing panel. I mean, there's seven, so we change it. Go. We would like to send Is there any discussion?
You got to move to the action.
I have to move into the action.
Probably a better option.
Adoption amendment of a bylaw. Any bylaw the board may be adopted, amended, replaced, or deleted at any regular meeting by a majority vote of the board present, provided that such proposals shall be given to the board at the pre-distorted meeting. So right now it's on information.
Okay, so that's
So someone needs to withdraw the motion.
Mr. Rod with the
So we're not moving the
We're not moving it.
It has to come on next.
It'll be on as an action item next, next. Thank you. Okay, that was the first thing. Um, you know, can I finish my, my fourth? I need, excuse me. Mr. Janelle is in a rush. Let's go. It's not on the table. Saturday. Okay. Hey, everybody slow down. Ready? Tomorrow, Friday, not tomorrow, but Friday, there is a ceremony at Western Connecticut State University in Newtown, Newtown campus by ACE. I don't know what the name of the ceremony is. Do you know what it is? Nine forty-five, Mrs. Speaker.
What's the ceremony for?
They're bringing, the, Sandy talked about the
Oh, the prisoners, the, um,
Prisoners are coming. Russia. Excuse me. The inmates. I'm sorry? It's nine forty-five. It's It's that great late score. It was the one that was sent out, trying to give everybody that. It's the only one that I knew about. Now we're starting a new, uh, don't eat alone. Richard introduced to me as that's something.
Yeah, that's to fight social isolationism.
Okay. That is on, on this coming Friday.
Sort of a blow.
Right. Don't I'm sorry, no one eats alone. Eleven thirty, twelve, or twelve thirty. Thirty, twelve, or twelve thirty. We're locked out of the Okay, next. The following Friday is the twelfth, and that is, no, just a point, that's Oh, Dr. Seuss is the next one that's coming up. On the second of March, Rita Cross America, Mar Street School, reached out to all of us. Did everybody sign up? I know you are, and I am also. And Fred is? Yeah, it's, yeah. All right, how about this? How about if I resend out these emails? Has them physically in front of the, you do that when I go home tonight, right after I eat dinner in Des Moines, okay? All right, next on the agenda is, what's one of the things? What is it? Oh, the twenty-fourth of this month, that's what it was. At seven, at nine, no, at seven thirty in the morning, we're going to go to the breakfast in Newtown for, for Cade Area Five. Um, legislative breakfast. It's a legislative breakfast. It's from seven thirty to nine thirty in Newtown Municipal Center. We could carpool to make sure we all get there, guys. It's really important. We're the largest board in the area that we have representation. Last year, I think we had two, or was it three?
We want to read, reread that with the date.
Wednesday, the twenty-fourth of February, two thousand sixteen, seven thirty to nine thirty. The council chambers of Newtown Municipal Center. Um, you're not
The other one was
She might, and Heather might. It was a real tentative. You haven't seen the face. Okay, Michael?
I'm going to try to get it checked.
I went last year. I think I did that.
You did go that year. Yes. What a guy. Oh, Kim did not go.
Oh, yes, you know.
There's not a way. I wanted to have you. Not so far for us. I heard you said one on the twenty-third. You need to know, they, when they, they were any of these Okay, you have to look at it. They don't know that we everywhere, okay? Family, where is that?
I haven't heard anything about Penn University.
Yeah, she did, she, she did at the citywide PTO.
Yeah, but I didn't hear what state she's selling.
She said it's, I'll get that out.
I'll ask, we'll find it.
All right, I'll get that list and I'll get that, everybody, I'll resend the gate. What I'll just do is take mine and forward it to anybody, because there's a register button on it, so you just push the button. But together, let's try to go together, all right?
Check the people. Good thing.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Next, let's talk about committees. Richard, go.
Tonight in the community relations committee, we had discussed and decided that this would be four committee and build somebody being required. The projects would be start with the whole network and be four layers on spearhead that. The ECS funding project, I would spearhead that. The community outreach, outreach, sorry, outreach would be Mrs. Cooper. She would spearhead that. And Sammy Gata makes a difference would be Ms. Holly Robinson would spearhead that. And also, Emmy had given us a brief presentation on what's called pilot welcoming to your school, a pilot program, which would be very, very interesting to see how receptive individuals are to individuals.
Thank you. There's a lot of work left to do that, that we, um, so anyone else in the community that they'd like to report on? See, everybody says.
Sal covered the citywide.
Okay. That's it. Anybody else? Okay, um, that's it. Okay, if you're, we're going to go into an executive session, so we'll grab that.
Need motion.